How are we going to be a school system? Because if you can be a primary school, and we right now, uh, we're doing it with five schools. Talking about the board.
Editions.
Edition of five schools. So much I'm right. I'm sorry, but the teachers are true. So we've got a lot of things to think about and a lot of things to start working to watch. Because the citizens of this county, we are bad guys. When we don't, when we are often, when we are not the one that's creating the problem. But it's a serious problem if you need to start, uh, looking towards trying to resolve. And you say, all right, probably that has nothing to do with the problem, because you know what? Probably telling them a lot of, a lot of broad, but let me just wait till I sit here and listen to the plan. That's what I'm hearing.
I got a question, what? When we priced out the new treatment facility, what was like coming or something like that?
It's going to run anywhere from sixty, it's six on the log in per gallon, it's me, so you're looking at sixty to a hundred million.
Alright, I mean, I know our ratings and stuff just came back as well for finance, I mean, something like that for a treatment plan. I think it was discussed that wouldn't be beneficial if maybe we try to take on some debt for that, for a project. I mean, while it's cheap, if our money, might as well do it then and do it now. Uh, instead of saving, you know, our liquid assets for, you know, something else.
Well, the park regional right now, uh, they have applied to the state for licensing to increase the size of which were treatment plan. Uh, so we're waiting on the state to do that.
So, if I may, so we still not heard back on what any plans have been approved yet?
We're also, uh, just in the process of putting together a list of what we need. And, and the dollar figure to go with that. Uh, we know to have that, uh, I've asked you to have this in three to five, a little of this month. Uh, when we meet, we, we have our joint meeting with the municipal senate and the legislators, uh, to talk about, uh, where to do the infrastructure. So he, he's working on that right now, and we have a much better view for that.
That's good, thank you, so much, other than that, come on.
It is very important. Um, so what's the feeling about rearranging some of these priorities? The movement economic development up to number one, the jet port to two, and I think schools three, and then broadband four. That's just my opinion. Asking, I'm asking my fellow commissioners what you're about to say.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, economic development to me, the major report, it covers so many things to the county that we're talking about that in the meeting. I think you can back to argument, I think I should, I support we've got this here, will be covered under the economic development. But I can, I can see us put that if we're going number one far. Are you agreeable with that?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, especially in light of the funding that we now have available for broadband, uh, which we have very little to none available in here. So, I'm, I'm agreeable with that, I understand the issue, but at the same time, I do have funding there if we can use it, so.
Okay, um, just to, to be clear, the economic development, that would include the, uh, the assistance in cre- creating the sites as well as the natural gas expansion, correct?
Correct.
If the board is amenable to those, that prioritization, uh, we will put that in a final form and present it to you for adoption, uh, at your next meeting.
Anyone object to that? Take that kind of a warning, please.
Alright, thank you very much.
And then, uh, what's the feelings of moving the, uh, expansion enhancing and enhancing of the jet port? What's, what's the feelings making that the number two priority?
You told us sides of that, you know, spells for this, uh, thing we're trying to move, so. So that's, uh, definitely going to be a big barrier for economic development.
I don't have a problem with that, providing that, um, people want to develop that, growing that gotta come together. Simple across the, growing need for broadband across this county. They took a proposal of kids, educational assistance, those kids need that. So we want to do that, and then broadband being the next one, I'm coming with.
So you're saying, uh, put economic development one and, uh, broadband two, or?
No, we already list, you know, we list one, two, and then make broadband the third.
Okay.
This gotta be, I mean, that's how this, I provide you two.
And as opposed to schools, make schools four?
Schools is, schools is important, very important, make schools four. And I believe broadband for our education.
How can, how can we avoid that?
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to do that, we're going to have to expand the four lane highway anyway, can't. All this construction takes place, we've got a clock up our highway, we can, we got to have an expansion of four, but we can't stop something.
Do we want to, uh, I know we were trying to get it down to, to three, but do we want to expand it to five and put, uh, transportation? We've got one four lane road that will be start construction this year, uh, later in twenty twenty-two. Uh, but that's not nearly enough, uh.
As I, as I travel, I get the last flat in the morning, or, or I, I think I saw you doing that one up, four of those. And that was a weekend long, that was terrible, people were trying to pull out and find work there. You can just see the expansion of the investment, including government for by team, you were particularly worried for the workers. We've got to have, got to have it four months, that ain't going to change, we got to have, they need to be productive, they react to putting on the gas. Just we always got.
If I can make a comment, you know, when we talked about the economic development, we already put expansion of industrial parks and natural gas. I think we put highways as a sub point three when it comes to economic development, uh, because it is similar in, in concept. And so as we talk economic development, it has three components that we feel are necessary in order to move forward.
I, I agree with that, that's, that's key, it really is. Uh, as far as the, uh, four oh one goes, I mean, the, the, uh, black cloud, but, of course, you know the study of the four oh one core that was going on right now. Right now, the expansion of four oh one is in the master transportation plan, the MTP twenty fifty. And the only way to move it forward is not through the legislature, but, uh, we've got to find a way to get that project scored higher points. Uh, if you want to comment on that, Mr. Price, I know you go to the TCC.
I know you're exactly right, Chairman, that's something we're going to have to lobby for strong. And I think when we meet with our legislators on, on the basis that we're meeting on, I, I do agree with, with economic development being your top priority, that you hone in on that. Because of the tremendous amount of growth in Northwest Hornet and Indian Village, it is going to cause that reaction. And unfortunately, transportation is using the last thing to get fixed, but we've got the squeaky wheel gets the grease, that's true. So, I, Chairman, I totally agree with your comments.
I think, I think us being a member of Campo, as far as in Northwest and Andrew, is, that's the biggest metropolitan planning organization in the state of North Carolina. And we have a very good relationship with them, we've been involved with them since two thousand and five. And we have good chairman, we have good staff, and I think that's something we're just going to have to mean on a regular basis.
And, and just so, you, just so everybody knows, the, uh, the STIP program, the STIP program. That was put in because the legislator had a highway built to his register. And, and, uh, the legislators and DOT said, we got to stop the legislators from corporate marriage projects. And that, that's why everything now is based on, uh.
Point system, appoint system?
Yeah, appoint system, everything's based on points. Uh, how do we get, how do we get, uh, four oh one moved up? I tell you what, a few places working on it, we're working on it, we're pushing it just as hard as we can. Uh, I can, I'm in agreement to put it into economic development because it's sort of a lead, but I don't know how much. Certainly, our legislative delegation can talk to the, the, the people of the DOT and the Secretary of Transportation and that kind of thing. But we got to find a way to get it for points, so that we can get it out of twenty fifty and get it into, this way. And get it into this lifetime anyway.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, yes, there are so many needs that we can list as priorities behind town. And listen to you all talk and talk about, all of it's very, very important. But I'm, I would love to make a motion when we change this, list the priorities from three to the least five. Because there are so many, there's so much, so much need here simply because of the growth here in this county. There is no way we could just here exclude, because I firmly believe that broadband should not be last. I have seen for the last two, two years, honey, how it has affected our education system for the children. And we now, we have funds coming into this county that we've never had before. And I'm thinking, I've been sitting here for many years, that, that we'll be blessed like everybody has in the state of North Carolina. But believe me, these funds are not going to continue to come out of the sky. So, we got to take, we got to get and hold on to what we can get and do the best that we can for our citizens of this county. And broadband should not be last, because I have been working on this for the last seven years. So I'm just saying that we, it's a lot of broad, so I, I make a motion that we change from three to top four to the least five. That, holding this could be too, listen to the whole thing, so, that's my motion if I'm in your opinion.
Just, um, go ahead, your second.
My second, then.
Okay, we have a motion to second, uh, on favor of increasing the priorities from three to top three, top five.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, question.
Um, what would be the top five?
Well, that's, that's, right now, I think, uh, we've all agreed economic development. And under economic development, we will have, uh, natural gas, we will have, uh, industrial parks and, and sites. We'll have transportation. Uh, I find speaking, uh, broadband under economic development, because broadband is, is critical. When you're talking about bringing in companies, uh, to the county, broadband is critical. They're not coming if there's no high speed broadband for, for them, yeah. Uh, and then number two would be, uh, the jet port. Number three would be, uh, schools.
Hey, man, I would just tell you, speak on that, schools, I hear right, uh, cause of, uh, the number of houses being built here in Honey County. We're going to run out of land for students.
And then I'm going to, then broadband, you can't sell that place.
That's right, that's, 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 so, schools has got to come and get some funding to help us be a more student sharing this county. Now, this five, I just called it, super generally, he said, five, it's going to take a lot more than that.
So right now, if I can, if I can read it, you've got, uh, you've got six priorities under three subheadings. Uh, the first subheading is economic development, that would include, uh, natural gas expansion, uh, assistance with the creation of an economic development sites and product. Uh, support of a four lane highway to away county and expansion of broadband, all under the first heading of economic development. The second heading, its, its own heading is assistance with Harton Regional Jetport, uh, followed by a third heading of education. Uh, that would be to provide additional solutions to assist with funding public education.
Do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, it's just a point of order, it's obviously where the work session is, the non-voting meeting except for the item on your agenda having to do with the fuel contract at the airport. So I take a consensus with the directive to make those changes and devote that on to your next voting meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Would, uh, we want to specifically list capital projects under the school gate, since that seems to be the major need, uh, that we need to provide at this moment, really, as I see.
I think certainly that's up to the board, we do have another priority related to, uh, the impact aid program, which I think is more popular on the operational side. So if that's something the board will be interested in, we should, we can specifically call out capital needs.
I, I guess, I guess where I'm coming from, I, I started having a problem going five, we're getting five five. However, if we want to look at economic development and have at this point four subheadings, we can use the sub jet port and two, three, whatever it is. I know there's talk about widening the runway, need for, uh, runway expansion, maybe lengthening and widening, I know there's talk about the need for hangers. Uh, so, uh, the need for just land for those projects, so, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is, maybe we go back and list two or three things of jet port. Two or three things of education, and maybe we cover what we get ready to put into five movements, just my.
I agree with that, Mr. Matthews, I think, under, uh, under jet port, uh, land acquisitions, uh, acquiring land or land for jet port should be a high priority. Uh, and I think, uh, the expansion, uh, a plan to develop, uh, additional hangers, uh, should be a high priority.
If I may, I want to be clear that, uh, we're compiling a list of priorities for our legislative delegation. So my question, you know, just as we're thinking about these, are these, what is their role in helping to accomplish that versus setting priorities for the board to participate in?
Well, I think we need to talk to them about, uh, how we can fund it for those projects.
Okay, and right now, the way that that priority is listed, it is requesting, uh, funding, it does list out all those projects within the single priority and request assistance with funding. So if that's amenable, we can move forward with that, or we'd like to, to highlight that in a, in a separate way, we can do that.
What's the feeling of the board?
So I guess, Brian, if I understand correctly, the question is, rather than move now under, uh, air, the jet ports, since that's what we're all now. Uh, we just had it in the description, as you can see us now, to do the same thing with economic development, include those four cards in the description.
Well, I think that the economic development priorities are so unique, uh, in their, they, to me, they feel like separate items. That the transportation is a separate thing from broadband, uh, from developing property. We were asking for separate things from our legislators related to those specific issues. Uh, for the jet port, uh, it, it seems that the, the main ask is for help us acquire additional funding for these projects, uh, to be listed under that, that factor. So the way I, I've kind of, we've kind of heard it is to, to list priorities by individual requests of our legislators.
Well, I don't know, I think we probably spent a lot of time to break the format here, which probably not that important, so we have content above, so I, I may go with whichever way that my fellow commissioners would like to do that.
Would you like to, uh?
Well.
amend your motion, uh, Mr. McCoy, and, uh, do the consensus on it, so we can.
Well, I made my motion, uh, and to get a consensus, definitely, I don't think it's a problem.
Is it the consensus of the board to take the six priorities that have been provided, uh, to list them as your top priorities under the three subheadings of economic development, jet port, and, uh, education? Uh, and then, as we've done in the past, we'll list the remaining priorities in the document, but won't our legislature focus on list those top six?
I, I agree with that, I think that's the way we figure this in the fact, so, yeah.
I think we have a consensus that, uh, that's the way we want to.
Okay, we will prepare that for your, your packet, for your next voting meeting.
Um, since we have a consensus on how we want, uh, the, uh, priority structure, uh, we can just put that in the consent agenda for, uh, this one. If you can get that to us before, I mean, so we have a chance to read over.
It will go out to you in your packet on Wednesday, if you'd like, I'll send an email to you separately, we can do that as well.
Yeah, that's fine. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, um, the next item is discuss and consider implementation of Harton Regional Jet Port, uh, fuel purchasing, how track, uh, Mr. Track, you want to address that?
Sure, well, when I got here, there was, uh, a discussion that was occurring related to bids that we received for fuel processes at the jet port. Through the discussion, the bids were slightly different as each composed them. And so the, the debate that occurred was whether or not that was appropriate to take those set bids for, um, the airport committee decided that they would like to see it rebid. And the format and the request for the bids, and so in order to honor that, in consultation, a couple of commissioners, who think that that's the best way to move forward is to reject the bids. Um, suggestions have been made related to the format of the bid request and legal, Chris is working on that and is preparing that in order to be able to send that out. But prior to being able to do so, we need to make a, uh, motion to reject the bids, uh, as they were presented, and that allows us then to reissue for, for request for this. So that's what we'll ask for, we should approve, uh, and it is on the item and notified that we could take action in two day, and that's decided.
Do I hear a motion to, uh, reject the, the previous bids, uh, on the previous RFP?
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion that we, uh, reject the bids on the previous RFP and submit a, uh, new R, new request or proposals, uh, with guidelines so that the bids will be in line when they come in.
Sorry, some seconds, motion. Alright, we have a motion and second, any further comments about this? Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to reject all the bids that we, we received, is that?
Yes, ma'am.
And new bids will come in.
Yes, ma'am.
At least tell me that we can push this up.
They'll be eligible to resubmit.
Oh, that's my question.
Yeah, they'll be eligible to resubmit, but we're going to change the format of the bid.
I want a package, that's all.
Yeah, they, they will, they will, they will receive the package, everybody here.
Okay.
Commissioner McCoy, it's also my understanding that, um, the airport advisory committee recommended that we take the section.
Okay, I'm fine with it, I just want to know what we do.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of rejecting the bids, uh, the previous bids and issuing a new RFP, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, um, the next item, Mr. Hall, uh, electronic signature policy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so hopefully this one will be pretty straightforward and simple and force, uh, it's actually not a policy, just to clarify, it's a resolution, uh, to accept electronic signatures. We talked about a policy, we went back and forth with legal a couple of times, it just gets really complicated to write out a new policy, quite the state statutes have already addressed most of those things. And so basically what I'm asking is, uh, that this resolution be, um, accepted by the county, uh, like included with the agenda request. The resolution permits county transactions signed electronically to have the same force and effect as a manual signature or web signature, according to the validity requirements of the state, um, uh, state statute sixty-six fifty-eight-five. And I can go through those validity requirements if you would like, but it kind of gets more technical, uh, but in the end, we're just asking that, that signature, electronic signature, same for contracts, human resources, anything that will be accepted signature. Any clarifying questions, anything? We took this as an example from this, or actually just recently did this resolution, um, and just made that a lot easier to separate, uh, instead of trying to create a new policy that aligns the same ways the statutes are.
And this is just so that if we require, uh, according to legislature, if we require electronic, uh, signatures, they will be treated the same as a, uh.
Yeah, as a person's signature, I guess. Yeah, yeah, as long as it meets all the validity requirements as in that statute. And, uh, it's really, we've been accepting them for a while, but, but right now, Thomas Roy has always had to make a, uh, you know, a guideline, you know, this, we're, we're making an exception for this particular one. So if, for whatever reason, especially the state and many vendors that can do it, they want to take away from signature, they want to give us one back. So we have to have a Ducky Sign or an Adobe Sign or one of the other fifty electronic signature manufacturers to give us that.
Let's see, a consensus of all.
Yeah, that's some little consent in there.
My clerk, you will add that to the consent agenda?
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Hany, uh, you know, come up and talk about the lease agreement at one twenty-five Alexander Drive, where at?
Alright, I've got the next two items as well, uh, so this is trying to move forward with implementation of the, uh, property exchange agreement the board approved in December. Uh, when that agreement was approved, uh, one of the properties that the county, uh, would receive and is in the process of receiving from the town of Fullington is the warehouse space behind, uh, the former administrative building now occupied by the development services in IT, um, at one twenty-five Alexander Drive. Uh, per the lease agreement, simultaneous to acquiring that, or, or the property exchange agreement, simultaneous to acquiring that property, the county agrees to enter into lease agreements, uh, to lease the northern third, uh, of the warehouse property to the town of Fullington. Uh, they have items in that, uh, building still, they're trying to find another location for, uh, and this will give them time to do that. Uh, and the southern two-third section of the property to Board of Education as tenants, uh, respectively, for a rental amount of one dollar per year. Uh, the Board of Education, they are.
Uh, the Board of Education, they are giving the Town of Burlington the downtown properties, uh, including the Red Barn. And, uh, obviously, when the Board of Education leaves that property, they need a place to store those items and those functions. So, uh, this will allow them to do this temporarily in this warehouse space until such a time as the county, uh, funds the construction, they do warehouse facility for study of maintenance. Uh, the Harney County Schools has identified a land that is already owned by the school system for that property, uh, near the Burger King in Burlington, a property they already own. Uh, these lease agreements, uh, will, will allow for the lease of these spaces. Uh, and I have, uh, there have been some edits since this was initially put in your packet. Um, staff met with, uh, Commissioner Matthews and, uh, school staff on site to get an understanding of what their needs and uses of the facility will be. That has been incorporated into their agreement. Similarly, we heard from the Town of Burlington regarding their needs in their space, uh, and that has been incorporated into their agreement. Uh, one point I do want to make, uh, is that the school system, I don't, I haven't explicitly said this, uh, so I do want to bring it to the board's attention. Uh, the school system, once the Burlington vacates their building, that will be within one year, uh, the school system would like to expand their operations to the full facility until such a time as a new facility is constructed. Uh, which, you know, I think at a point that once the new facility is constructed and the school system relocates to that facility, this will become available for county use for the purposes of the warehouse or any, anything else the county may need at that. Are there any questions related to these agreements?
For the Board's information purposes, the deed from the Town of Burlington to Harney County for warehouse property has been signed. I intend to pick it up at the town attorney's office today, and it will be recorded today. Any kind of answer questions concerning this lease? It's the consensus of the board to approve this lease. We will add it to the consent agenda for Monday.
Okay.
And we will move on to the other number steps.
And just to clarify, it is two lease agreements on Harney County Schools and the Town of Burlington, uh, and they will go before the Board on the consent agenda. Thank you. The next item is a request from Sheriff Wayne Coats. If you recall, on the January third, uh, agenda, there was a request to reclassify two positions following some changes in staffing that were made in the Detention Center and the reallocation of some of the duties that previously have been done by the Detention Center Administrator to, uh, two positions. One, the current classification assistant. Um, there was a request that had been made to reclassify that position several grades higher based on those duties. However, at the time, the sheriff, uh, was unaware of the simultaneous request from county management to reclassify all county employees who had not previously received a reclassification to grades. So, in looking at that, uh, the sheriff reevaluated the situation and would like to, uh, submit an alternate, an alternate request for that reclassification to, to take into account the two grade reclassification provided by the Board for all employees and to align the request with, uh, the definition of a reclassification of the Harney County personnel. This is really to stay clean about it.
What's the question of the board? Do we bring this, uh, reclassification?
Is that, that's a...
If it's strictly a reclassification, it's not, uh, increasing or decreasing personnel. Okay, consensus of the board is to approve this, so that we will have that in the consent agenda.
All right, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Hannity. Mr. Matt? The Board members of the next item on your agenda is starting to sell a quick piece of real property in the City of Dunn. Um, Harney County and the City of Dunn are the owners of a point one-four acre tract on East Edmonton Street in Dunn. This was procured several, many years ago in taxable closure, and now the county has moved the property ever since. The property itself, that you see on the packet agenda items, uh, you see the parcel ID number, the location of the property, basically. Uh, for two thousand twenty-one, tax value on this property is five thousand dollars. You're talking a bill price at the tax office, leave out that you win a twenty-eight percent, six thousand four hundred forty dollars. So, that's the other day tax rate value on this property. The City of Dunn in December received a communication from Duncan Deals Company LLC of Raleigh of wanting to make an offer pursuant to the offer of purchase of said bid procedure by statute for this property. And don't get excited, this isn't for a Duncan Dunn, that's a freight side or anything. Let's pick the town of Dunn. Duncan Deals has nothing to do with Duncan Dunn. But the situation, they have made an offer of seventy-five hundred dollars on this property, and the City of Dunn, second year approval, has already accepted that offer by resolution of their bidding on December fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, so, what we're coming to you for today is, uh, is to see if you have any questions about this proposal by the City of Dunn and by Duncan Deals Company LLC. If you have any questions about the location of the property, that type of thing. Ultimately, what we're asking for is that before we consider those resolutions, it's also in your packet at your next voting meeting, which will in effect accept the offer of seventy-five hundred dollars pursuant to the said bid procedure. I will say that in addition to Duncan Deals LLC and Mr. Crowell from Dunn has also expressed an interest in this property, so hopefully this will help the bidding and maybe an increase in this offer pursuant to the bid procedure. If you have any questions, we'll... Y'all mentioned these procedures before, basically, the offer is advertised in a local newspaper, subject to statute, anybody can file that said bid. If somebody does file that said bid pursuant to the minimum requirements, then it's re-advertised again, it just keeps going until you finally get that one bid on the property. Can we do a public hearing on this? The public hearing is required, you would just vote at your next meeting, decided to do it on this resolution, it's in the packet. So, is this an empty lot? It's an empty lot on a portion. If you, if you look at your, that diagram in your package, hopefully you've got it there. Go back to the GIS, right there. It's, it looks like a half of the triangle, half of the lot, basically, but the lot is being sold as a... The property next door on the right-hand side, on the east side, is owned by Duncan Deals now. They're having issues with the City of Dunn, and as you see, there's two buildings on that now, and one of them is not conforming. So, one of the deals, I think their plan is, is to buy this lot and make a full lot. They want to tear down the house in the back, split the property, put another house on this lot to conform with the City of Dunn properties. So, hopefully now that you have a non-tax paid lot, it's not bringing any income from the city or county now, and that will be replaced by two lots, a house on each one, and a very big lot on each other, plus a separate one. Is everybody in agreement for this? Is the consensus of the board is to proceed with this, uh, enterprise of this property? So, as far as the resolution is concerned, which will now in the consent agenda, the next voting meeting? Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. The next item involves the exchange agreement that Brian was talking about, which all of you are very familiar with, that we had with the Town of Burlington and, uh, for the Board of Education. This is a clean other matter here involving the revert clause, as you can see on my introduction letter back in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, Attorney Bill Johnson donated to Harney County two tracks which make up a portion of the old library property. If you can pull that picture up, this GIS picture on that. This is the parking lot area off East Harney Street going into the old library. What you see outline there is the, is the conveyance. Basically, there's two tracks, if you look at the deed. One is the conveyance in the blue area, which is a good portion of the parking lot area. And then, the other small track, it's like five foot wide and a hundred and fifty feet length, and that's just a sidewalk in front of it, basically. So, back in ninety-seven, to make that complete for county library purposes, Bill Johnson donated that property to the county. The problems in the deed are the revert clause, automatic revert clause, which is things you normally want to stay away from if you can, but when people give you property, you can take what you can get. And that's what the county did back then on this property. But the revert clause has stayed there, basically, and what it says is, in such time that Harney County ceases to use this property for public library purposes, then it reverses back to either that Bill Johnson can live in or his heirs have deceased. So, obviously, with the property exchange agreement, the fact that a library in this building right across this hall here, basically, this building, I mean, this, this portion of the parking lot property is no longer being used for public library purposes. Bill Johnson is deceased, he died back in two thousand thirteen, and left three children, all of which are lost, Sandra, back, and then back to Lynn Johnson, basically. So, they have, they had inquiries several times to, they need, and Charlie Book, who was the attorney for Board of Education, was going to end up with this property, saying, "Look, we want our property, we want the revert clause to take effect and want our property back." And they're not doing it to give anybody a hard time, they're just doing it to follow through with the revert clause because they're going to have discussions with the Board of Education regarding, hopefully, donating this property back or getting a tax break and that type of thing that they'll be looking for. So, I've done this by Charles Willock, who's the school board attorney, said, "Charlie, you want the property back, you have any hiccups about it?" And he said, "Go ahead and do it," because the main thing is, when you go to GIS now, the property is still in the name of the county. Uh, the family have gone to GIS and said, "We want the revert clause, we want this lifted in our name," but they won't do that, and there's something on record to reflect that. So, that's where the quick claim deed comes from. So, they have proposed that the county do a quick claim deed. And quite a quick claim deed under Oklahoma law is you've got various kinds of deeds, you have general warrant deeds, non-warranted deeds, quick claim deeds. When you sign a quick claim deed, you're saying, "Whatever interest I got this property, I can pay it to you." And that's what they're saying is, they said, "Give us a quick claim deed where you're not warranted anything except the fact that you recognize it as a revert clause, and this property goes back to the city way as a matter of law." So, you recognize that, and you're saying, "It's okay for we go back to the operations of the revert clause." Once that deed is on record, then they can go to GIS and get that switched, and then they can, at that point, they can begin truthful and meaningful negotiation with the Board of Education about their parking lot in the new administration. And another question would be, "Okay, well, once we go through all this and then we get that, they can now to negotiation, and they can't negotiate anything that they're subjecting to them by the Board of Education." And that's why I talk to Charles every time, and he seems confident in his discussions with him, that they're going to get part of it. So, what, basically, the heirs of W. A. Johnson are asking you to consider is the quick claim deed, which they have drawn and approved, which I've proved also is non-attending this. And they're asking you to consider it as an exception, as an authorization to execute by the sheriff that day. Is everyone in agreement to issue a quick claim deed to the Johnson thing? It's not the consensus of the board is to issue a quick claim deed. If you don't draw any other lesson from this speech, basically, as it is, if you have anybody donate the property to you in the future, anytime you want, stay away from the revert clause. Thank you, Mr. Hannity. All right. This is the fact, we all came...
Before we get started, um, I just want to let everybody know that this is a lengthy presentation because we've got sixty-seven projects to cover. So, uh, we'll go through them as quickly as we can. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time and we'll discuss them. Uh, we won't cover everything on the slides, but each of the slides has a page number that's referenced back to the document. We'll go over the legal framework for a CIP, the review process that we went through, our funding strategy, the reader's guide, the action summary, the projects themselves, and our next steps. Having a CIP is not legally required, but if we do, it's charged with the manager to prepare it. And as a governing board, you're to adopt project ordinances and establish capital reserve funds if we use them. And it's really important to remember throughout this, this is just a plan and not a budget. Having a plan in the CIP does not mean that we can immediately start spending the money. Projects must be budgeted through the operating budget or through a project ordinance. We'll put it in a project ordinance if we know that it's going to expand multiple fiscal years. We'll put it in the operating budget if we know that we can cover it within one fiscal If it's not legally required, then why do we do it? By having a capital improvements plan, we get everything listed in one place. It's a systematic way of anticipating, planning, and budgeting for our major projects. Our CIP shows how our capital projects that are a hundred thousand dollars or more are scheduled over the next seven years, and it helps link our county goals and our long-range For the review, for the review process, our CIP includes the general government departments, our solid waste department, Harney County Schools, and Central Carolina Community College. Harney Regional Water is not included in our CIP because they have their own. They have a ten-year plan as well as we have a seven. The CIP projects include all components of the capital that it's a hundred thousand dollars or more. It's updated annually in the fall, but it may be modified at any time. And you'll see a couple of projects that were actually scheduled in the last year's CIP that actually moved up. It's, the departments that submit requests, they receive detailed training in the fall, and they're required to provide us a thorough written justification of the project, a reliable cost estimate, a project budget, and estimates on the impact it will have on our operating The projects are based on today's dollars and inflated uniformly. Normally, it's a three percent increase per year or six percent for construction costs, and that's kind of iffy these days. Projects are vetted in turn, first by an internal concept team. That way, when a department brings a project forth, it gives that department a chance to make sure that they've got everything covered that they need to submit. Then, the projects are reviewed by the management team to determine if it's going to be a funded project or recommended as a future project. If it's a funded project, we're recommending as a funded project, we've actually got a funding source. We know how we're going to pay it, pay for it upfront. If it's a future project, we know it's an important project that's coming up, but we want to, um, keep it in the plan, but right now, we don't have either a reliable funding source, a valid cost estimate, or we still need to refine the scope of the project. For our funding strategies, we always want to maximize grant opportunities and other funding sources. We want to reserve our debt capacity for the essential projects like schools and big facilities. We want to, um, estimate the operating cost to develop an overall financial model. And when possible, we attempt to pre-fund projects for the pay-go projects and basically... And basically, what that means is, we know in advance when something very large or expensive is coming up, we want to start setting money aside in a capital reserve years out so when that project does come, we're able to pay for it without having to borrow money. And we want to continue our appropriations to our special revenue funds for parks, sheriffs, and fleet. On pages 13 and 14 of the CIP is the funding summary. This table shows the funding sources for the CIP projects by year. The major revenue sources are installment and other debt, capital reserves, and grants. On page 15 is the operating impacts. This table shows the combined effect of the operating budget on the recommended projects for the next seven years. The operating affects debt services, increased operating costs, decreased operating costs, additional revenues, and appropriations of revenues necessary to fund the projects. On page six is the reader's guide. This just describes how each section of the project details. It shows the status, the project budget, the cost, the totals, basically just how to read the projects. On pages seven through nine is the action summary, and this is how we'll be looking at the projects during the presentation. It's the level of the discretion the board has to change things. Projects are grouped by level of approval. The board has complete discretion over new projects and those that are approved with no contracts yet, but you need to realize that some costs have already been spent, such as design. On page three in the introduction is the Harney County Request the Board of Education Priority List. In April of 2021, as part of the fiscal year 2022 budget request, the Board of Education presented a list of facility needs to the Board of Commissioners. The chart on this page shows how the CIP addresses those needs. Two items have recently affected the school's project list in the CIP, and those are the real property exchange that's already been discussed today and the ESER funds. Harney County Schools has recently, has received nearly $75 million under the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, which is also called the ESER funds. These funds may be used for several purposes, including making repairs or renovations to facilities. Harney County Schools proposes to use $43.5 million in ESER funds for facilities. The ESER funds received by the school system will be used to address multiple projects on this list, and you'll be able to see that under the CIP, how CIP addresses it. And in December, Harney County, Harney County Schools, and the Town of Lillington approved a contract and agreement to exchange a number of real property tracts between the three entities. The agreement included two properties listed in the CIP. That included the Star Academy Gymnasium, which is being transferred from the school system to Lillington, and the current Harney County custodial and maintenance warehouse and land, which is transferring from the schools to the Town of Lillington, with the school system storing some of those items in the county-owned warehouse until that facility is built. Do we have any questions so far before we start talking about the projects?
Any questions concerning what we've covered so far?
Okay. So we'll review the projects by the level of the board discretion to make the changes as listed in the action summary. The completed projects include those that have been completed in both fiscal year 21 and those that have been completed so far in fiscal year 22. We had seven that were completed in fiscal year 21 and three that have been completed so far in fiscal year 22. On page 16, these are the seven projects that were completed in fiscal year 21, so which is everything that was completed before June 30th of 2021. We had three that were completed under budget, two were completed on budget, and two were completed over the budget. One of these was the Board of Elections Voting Equipment Replacement on page 24 of the CIP. This one came in at a little under $208,000 in fiscal year 21. It was completed in May of 2021. Partial funding was from the HAVA grant, and the rest of it was funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. This is one example of where a project was planned for fiscal year 22, but because of grant funding and a deadline, we were able to move that up and go ahead and fund that last fiscal year. So that was, that's an example of how it's in a plan, but it can change. The next one is the Emergency Radio Northwest Harney Tower Replacement. That's on page 36. This one was for a little over $833,000. Construction of the new tower was completed in June of 2021, and the old tower was demolished and completed on July of 2021. The next one is the Harney County Resource Center and Library and DSS Edition, and that's on page 41. This project was $26.4 million and was funded from installment debt, bond premium, the general fund, and interest. A certificate of occupancy was issued for the Resource Center and Library on January 29th, 2021, and staff moved into the new building the week of February 15th of 2021. The facility opened to the public in April, and as of September, staff is still working through several final items, but otherwise, the project is complete. The DSS expansion was completed in August of 2020, and child support services moved into that addition. And this picture was taken with the GIS drone shortly after we moved in. The next completed project is the 911 Dispatching Software Replacement on page 18. This project came in under budget at almost $480,000 in fiscal year 2021. It was partially funded from 911 funding, and the rest of it was from the Radio Project Capital Reserve Fund. Software went live on March 31st of 2021. And there's our telecommunicators using the software. The next one is the Record Software Replacement on page 54. This one came in on budget at about $140,000 in fiscal year 21. It was funded from the asset forfeiture funds, and the software went live on November the The next project was the Cape Fear Shiner Park Development Phase 1 on page 63. This one came in a little under budget as well, and it was for almost $827,000. It was completed in October of 2020. It was mostly funded, or partly funded from the Part of Grant and the remainder from the Park's Capital Reserve Fund. The next project is the Park, the Patriots Park Development Phase 1 on page 68. This one came in over budget at a little over $410,000, and it was completed in May of 2021. It was over budget because of bad souls and having to move staff over to the Cape Fear Shiner Park to finish that park to, in order to meet the grant deadline for that project. Patriots Park Development Phase 2 on page 70. That one came in on budget for almost $96,000, and it was completed in May of 2021, and it was funded from the Park's Capital Reserve, and this was the construction of the picnic shelter and playground. The next one was the Public Libraries, the Radio Frequency Identification Installation on page 73. This one came in under budget, just a little under $100,000 in fiscal year 2021. It was completed in July of 2021. The RFID technology allows the library materials to be tagged for self-checkout, better inventory, and theft control. This project was 75% grant-funded from the State Library Technology Fund, and the rest was from the Capital Reserve Fund. And our last completed project is the Solid Waste, the Bulldozer Replacement on page 80. This one came in under, I mean, over budget, $428,000, and it was funded from the Solid Waste Capital Reserve Fund. The cost of equipment went up during the pandemic, so that's the reason it was over budget. It was actually ordered in July of 2020 and not delivered until November of 2020. So it's in use, being used now. Any questions on our completed projects?
Any questions from the board? Is the DSS building, stated that that was completed?
The addition that went on the end that child support's moved into, yes, that's completed, except for the third floor. Right now, there's no plans. I know that at one point, we had talked about doing a space study when we do that countywide, that we would look at that area up there too. For the approved contracts, these are the contract let projects. These were either approved in a prior CIP or by other action. There's little discretion to change or remove the project. The main construction or purchase contracts have already been executed, and you're able to postpone the expenses of future phases for this. Our first one is the Broadband Expansion Initiative on page 26. The county is currently partnering with Cloudwise for expansion of broadband in underserved and unserved areas of the county. Cloudwise is also working on a countywide broadband deployment plan. $2 million was funded from the general fund fund balance, which were, where we got the displaced CARES Act funding. We'll continue to apply for state and federal grants to offset county costs, and we're considering best how to use the ARCA funds to fund broadband expansion. The current stage of this project is as of January 2022. The Lillington Tower, which is on Edwards Brothers Drive, the Oak Ridge Tower, which is in the northwest part of the county, and the Andrew Tower has been permitted and equipment has been ordered to enable the broadband. It's anticipated these towers will be online by March. The fiber build to the Lillington Tower will begin in February of 2022, which will be the main point of internet access for the broadband system. The current expectation is beta customers will be on the system by 2022. And before we go to the next one, are there any questions on broadband? I was hoping I was still here. The next project is the Central Carolina Community College Parking Lot Resurfacing Project. I talked to Philip Price on Friday afternoon, and I got the most updated information from him. But this project was funded in fiscal year 22 at a little over $160,000 from Capital Reserve. This project would finish the parking lot resurfacing project in four parking lots. The project was bid and awarded in the fall of 2021, but the project didn't get started until early January. But then the crew got hit by COVID, so the project has been put on hold, but should be picked back up this week, and they're expecting the completion by March. The next project is the Old Jail Demolition and Relocation of Building Systems on page 38. This project is about $509,000, and it was funded in the current fiscal year from Capital Reserve. Since the building systems are shared with the old jail, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing systems will need to be moved. The county reissued an RFP for this project in October, and the commissioners ordered the project in November. A notice to proceed was issued on January the 10th, and the final completion is anticipated for July of 2022. And you can see there, the gray, the shaded area is actually the jail that will be demolished. The next project is Harney County Schools, the Irwin Elementary School Replacement on page 43. This is, this project constructed a school located on Denim Drive in Irwin, and it demolished the former Irwin School. The new school replaced Irwin and Gentry. The project is $31.4 million, and it was funded from the general obligation bonds and bond premiums. And as of the fall, as of this fall, the floors and metal roofing were installed and the school was painted. The school is projected to be substantially complete in March, and the school is projected to open April the 12th of 2022. The school system plans to convert Gentry into a staff development center, and it may have several, some central office functions. Mobile units that were at Gentry will be relocated to other schools. Next one is the Johnsonville Elementary School Phase 1 Expansion and Renovation on page 45. This project would demolish and replace the cafeteria with a 9,500 square foot building, demolish the old CTE classroom, and build and renovate 9,000 square foot gym. This project was $5.1 million, and it was funded from leftover GEO bond proceeds. The demolition of the classroom building was completed in August of 2021, and Phase 1 is expected to be completed in July of 2022. I spoke to Steve Matthews with the maintenance staff yesterday, and he said they're experiencing the effects of the supply chain issues too. So right now, this project may get pushed back to September or October, but they're just not 100% sure yet. Just depends on when they get their supplies in. And this picture was just recently taken in January, so it's coming along. The next one is the Northwest Harney Elementary School on page 48. And this project will construct a school on Rollins Road in Puket, and it will address the overcrowding and growth area in the Lafayette Elementary School. This project is $45.5 million, and it's funded from the general obligation bonds, grants, and lottery proceeds purchased the land. All bids have been awarded and site work has started. The target completion date is April of 2023. The targeted open date for the new school is August of 2023. The next one is the Harney Regional Jetport Airfield Lighting Rehabilitation Project on page 55. This project is $1.5, or $1.58 million. The design and the construction administration was 100% funded by North Carolina Department of Transportation and Division of Aviation. The construction part of the lighting rehabilitation was 90% funded by the Airport Improvement Grant Funds, and 10% match was funded from the Airport Capital Reserve. The project began in April of last year, and it, the lighting and signage is expected to be complete by early this year. The Harney Regional Jetport Master Plan, the last plan was updated in 2005. The plan will also include an up-to-date airport layout plan, and the ALP is required to receive airport improvement grant funds. This project is $414,000, and it's funded from grants and a 10% local match, which comes from our Airport Capital Reserve. Talbert and Bright have been, have completed the inventory and related aviation projections. The aerial survey was completed in April of 2021, and Parishion Partners took over the master plan update in January of 2022. Parishion Partners should give us the scope of service and estimated timeframe of completion The next one is the Ben Haven Community Park Redevelopment on page 62. This project was almost $140,000 in fiscal year 22, and it was funded from the Park's Capital Reserve. This project will restore the existing baseball, or the ball fields, playground, and construct a picnic shelter. Demolition has started on the existing fencing and ball fields. Staff has met with the playground representative to discuss playground and picnic shelter options, and planned renovations and upgrades are scheduled to be completed by June. Any questions on those projects? See, most of these are just review of what we had last year, and it's just kind of giving you a status update of where we're at. The next set of projects are the approved, no contract projects yet. These were either approved in the prior CIP or by other action. No construction or purchase contracts have been executed, but design contracts may have been. The manager is recommending these projects, but as commissioners, you have the discretion to change, delay, or delete the projects, knowing that some of the planning costs have may already been incurred. The first one is the Viper Radio Replacement. It's on page 29. This will replace the Viper radios before the state required upgrade and the support ends. It is, the cost is 7.2, 2.75 million in 2025. Right now, we have it, our funding strategy is 2.5 million from Capital Reserves and $252,000 from the Radio Project Capital Reserve Fund. Currently, the county owns about 298 mobile and 288 portable radios that will need to be replaced. Initially, the county had purchased radios for all the entities, such as the towns and the fire departments, but county funding is not recommended for those replacements. We've already communicated with these entities that they'll need to fund their own replacements, but it's still in our best interest to go ahead and work as a group to get the best kind of pricing. In December of 2021, emergency services applied for a grant to replace the Viper radios in the EMS division. If awarded, 10 additional radios will be purchased for the EMS field and administration staff, and we should find out in March if we're awarded that grant. The next project is the Emergency Medical Services Cardiac Monitor Replacement on page thirty-one. And this project will replace all EMS cardiac monitors at the end of their useful life in twenty-twenty-seven, which is typically about ten years. The monitors cannot be upgraded to the new technology, and the price of this is almost six hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and it's going to be funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. The next one is the EMS Convalescent Transport Unit Replacement. This is right at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars over fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-nine. It's funded from the Capital Reserve. This project replaces the convalescent transport units every three years. And they follow an EMS vehicle replacement and rotation policy, so they actually have a plan of when they replace these, and their plan states it, it depends on how many miles they have, how many hours they have on it. And for the vans, it's typically once every three years. The next one is the Emergency Transport Remounts on page thirty-three. And this project is almost three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-two. We went and included this year's through twenty-nine, and it's funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. There's four units included in the CIP. One was funded this fiscal year, one's being requested for twenty-twenty-five, and two are being requested in twenty-twenty-nine. A remount extends the life of an ambulance by replacing the chassis and renovating the box instead of replacing the entire ambulance. The remounts are projected based on the vehicle remount policy, and by just replacing the remounts, we're saving approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per vehicle instead of replacing it. The next one is the Emergency Transport Replacement, and this is the actual ambulances, and this is on page thirty-five. And this is one point eight million from fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-nine, and it's also funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. There are ten units included in the CIP. One was funded this current fiscal year, and you can see the breakout of how many over the next seven years. We also replace these based on current mileage usage and the vehicle replacement policy. They currently have eleven ambulances in their fleet with one simulation ambulance that they received from City of Dunn as a donation. Our Fleet Management and Replacement System is on page thirty-nine. And this project was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years, and we began this in fiscal year twenty-nineteen. It's funded by a transfer from the general fund. This replaces the county's non-emergency vehicles based on a standard criteria that minimizes maintenance costs and maximizes the resale value. The county is currently in year four of a self-leasing program. Using a points-based system to decide the priority of replacement, the county has purchased twenty-one vehicles and is leasing them back to the departments. Efforts to sell the vehicles have improved by advertising on gov deals. To set up the program, two hundred dollars was initially set aside for vehicle purchases, but based on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one fleet analysis study, the county should continue a contribution of one hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three for vehicle purchases, at which time we should be self-sustaining for this program. The next one is the Harnett County Schools Maintenance Fund on page forty-six. This is to continue the annual contribution of one point four million that we began this past fiscal year to replace their HVA systems and roofs. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-three funds will replace four boilers, two chillers, a roof replacement, and a roof recoding. Future funding would address a prioritized list of needs identified by the school maintenance staff. Harnett County Schools Maintenance Staff has inventory mechanical systems and roofs and identified replacement priorities over the next seven years. And I want to thank Steve Matthews and his staff, because they do a lot of work to make sure that I get my prioritized list every year, because he will list out for me. I'm going to do this, 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 and this, and that's where we put in the CIP, so we're able to track what's going on. And the next one is the Harnett County Sheriff's Capital Reserve Fund on page forty-nine. This is to continue the annual contribution of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we began this in fiscal year twenty-sixteen. This is primarily used for, to fund cars and other capital items. The next one is the Detention Center Security Intercom Replacement on page fifty. This was funded this past fiscal year at a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and it was funded from the sheriff's Capital Reserve. This project was originally scheduled for fiscal year twenty-one, but the pandemic caused delays with purchasing all the components of the system. But the project was completed as of last week. The next one is the Detention Center Video Surveillance System Upgrade on page fifty-one. Part of this project was funded and approved in twenty-twenty, but that just replaced the failed DVRs. The rest of the system was funded to be replaced in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two at a little over two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, and it was funded from the Capital Reserve. A new quote has been received, and the equipment will be early, uh, ordered early this week. The goal is to complete the project by the end of the fiscal year. The next project is the Harnett Regional Jetport Apron Expansion Project, and it's on page fifty-seven. This project is three point seven million dollars, and it's ninety percent grant funded from DOT and DOA with a ten percent match funded from the Airport Capital Reserve and the General Capital Reserve. This project expands the size of the apron and strengthens the existing pavement. It provides parking for nine additional planes and better passenger loading and unloading. The design portion of the project is complete and permitted. Work authorization for revised construction phases, planning, and design is underway with NC DOA reviewing the additional changes. It's anticipated the project will be rebid this month, and the bid opening will occur in March. The apron construction is expected to begin in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. And you can see here, the, the blue area is the work area. The light blue is the new pavement. The slightly darker area is the pavement to be overlaid. The project allows larger planes to park in front of the terminal without interfering with other aircraft. The next one is the Fiber Extension Project on page sixty-one. This project is going to be about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and it's going to be funded from the Capital Reserves, but it's not being requested until fiscal year twenty-eight. This will construct a one-mile fiber connection across the Cape Fear River from Duncan Street to Alexander Drive, and it will provide a redundant loop of the county's cord network and phone systems. You can see it going across the river right here on the, the yellow. Right now, if something over here gets cut, our system goes down until they can get a, get it back up. So if we had the redundant loop, that would certainly help. The next one is the Capital Reserves for Parks and Recreation. It's an annual contribution of two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, and we began this in twenty-eighteen. It provides a reliable source of funding for Parks and Recreation Capital Projects. The Parks Fund was used to develop Patriots Park this past year. Upcoming current projects include the development of Shawtown Community Park Phase One and the renovations and additions of amenities at Ben Haven Community Park. Other projected expenses include the engineering and cost estimates of future projects, water access site improvements, and possible monetary matches for grant funding. The Greenway Trail Construction Capital Reserve is on page sixty-six. The CIP recommends annual contribution of a hundred thousand dollars beginning in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Public input in the comprehensive plan and the Parks and Rec Master Plan showed Greenway Development as one of the top priorities. A bicycle pedestrian and Greenway Plan was completed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners in January of twenty-twenty-one. Parks and Recreation and Development Services staff are currently working on implementing plan recommendations and preparing documentation for future Greenway Development funding. The next one is the Shawtown Community Park Development, page seventy-one. This was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars funded in fiscal year twenty-two, and it was funded from the Parks Capital Reserve. This project would develop the next set of planned improvements, including a fitness station, playground, picnic shelter, and a community garden. The county has received an additional a hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars in funding from the state's budget, which will allow the county to install a larger playground and a picnic shelter. The additional state funds will also reduce the amount of funding from the Parks Capital Reserve Fund. The next project is Social Services and Commons Area Roof Replacement on page seventy-six. This project was funded in fiscal year twenty-two for almost three hundred thousand dollars, and it was funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. The estimates have been obtained, and the contract is currently being routed through, through the departments. The roof replacement is expected to be completed by fiscal, by the end of the fiscal year. The Solid Waste Northwest Convenience Center Relocation Project on page eighty-one. It was five hundred and thirteen dol, or five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, and it's being funded from the Solid Waste Capital Reserve Fund. This project will relocate the Northwest Convenience Center to the Oak Ridge Road in Fuquay, which is the same property as the new tower. It provides a larger and safer site to serve the growing population in that area. The department is currently reviewing plans and cost estimates to establish a phased approach to begin construction of Phase One in fiscal year twenty-two. The Board of Commissioners approved the project ordinance on September the seventh of twenty-twenty-one, and the department is currently moving forward the procurement process now. Any questions on that set of, uh, projects? Okay, the next one is the approved no contracts or part, part of the contracts have been executed. These were, this one, it's actually only just one. So it was approved in a prior CIP or by other actions. A portion of the construction or purchase contracts have been executed, but not all the main contracts have been. The manager is recommending this project, but the commissioners have discretion to change, delay, or delete the projects, realizing that some of the planning and purchase contracts and costs have already been incurred. And this one is the Former Ben Haven School Renovation Project. This project stabilizes the former Ben Haven Elementary School and prepares for an early college and readies the campus for future renovations. The community supports preserving and revitalizing this campus. It's about eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and it's being funded from Geo Bonds, Capital Reserve, and the general fund. Some major work to date for the early college and gym and the attached classrooms. The cafeteria has been demolished for parking. The flooring's been replaced, painting's been done, the ceiling's been installed, a water line's been replaced, and so have windows and doors. The other buildings, the roof's been replaced on the two-story, and the media center roof's been repaid, repaired, and the HVA system had had repairs. A site plan for construction of a new parking lot has been submitted to the Harnett County Development Services and Department of Environmental Quality, and it's waiting on approval. The current schedule has the project being bid in March of twenty-two, with the construction taking place in the spring, with completion anticipated by July. Harnett County Schools has expressed plans to open an early college in the gymnasium and attached classrooms in the fall of twenty-twenty-two, and county staff is currently working on providing some county services on campus once the parking lot is complete. And in fiscal year twenty-four, we're planning to replace the windows in the two-story building. Any questions on Ben Haven? Our next set of projects are our new projects, and there are only three of those that have been requested. These projects have not been approved in a previous CIP, but they may have been part of one of our future projects, or it may have been approved in the current operating budget, which is the case for one of these. The manager is recommend, recommending these projects, but you have complete discretion about timing and whether or not to fund. The one that's already, it's new to the CIP, but it's a project that's already in motion right now is the Harnett County Sheriff's In-Car Video Camera System on page fifty-two. This project will install, purchase and install in-car video cameras and fifty patrol cars. And this project was approved in the fiscal year twenty-two budget for a little over two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and it was funded from the asset forfeiture funds. The cameras were ordered in September, and they have been delivered, and installation is going on now, and they should be complete by the end of February. The Harnett Regional Jetport Hangar Development Project on page fifty-nine. Phase One of the hangar, hangar development will construct three corporate box-style sixty-five-by-sixty-square-foot hangars that required apron access infrastructure to allow aircraft to gain access to the apron air operations area. Leasing the three hangars could generate about fifty-six thousand dollars per year, depending upon the negotiated price. In addition, property taxes for aircraft stored within each hangar could add at least five thousand dollars or more per year, depending upon the aircraft's type, age, and condition. And this project is three million dollars and is being requested in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And this is an example of a project that we know this is a hot item and a high priority for the board, so we know that this will probably move up. But, um, so we're aware of that. It's ever-changing. And the next one is the Tax Office Billing and Collection Software Replacement on page seventy-seven. And this will replace the tax billing and collection software. The existing software does not integrate well with the current computer-aided mass appraisal system, which is also called KAMA. A single vendor for both KAMA and billing and collection software will reduce key errors, produce more accurate reports, and provide other efficiencies for their office. It's being requested in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three for a little over two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and it will be funded from Capital Reserves. Any questions on the three new projects?
I've got a question.
Okay.
On the Harnett Regional Jetport Hangar Development.
Mm-hmm.
Things are changing out there. I don't see any land acquisition funding here. Should that be included, or is that going to be handled separately?
That's something that Mr. Trout and I are working on. We actually had a call this week, they're engineer of record, so they're putting together a work authorization for that. Good question. Um, what we're doing is applying for grant funding to help, help with that, uh, cost of that. Um, to say that it needs to be in the cap, I don't have an issue with that, because it is a priority, so that may be something Lisa and I can look at to craft and put back in if that, that suits the manager's role.
It is something that we need to, to look at with the expansion and the replacement. The addition of new land is going to be important. Um, we're looking at a couple of different options. It's coming from state. We could look at part of money. It depends on really what the priority and timing is. Um, with the terminal building and the other steps that are necessary, with the master plan coming, I think that we'll be able to have a good handle on when we need to make that purchase. And, and we know from previous discussions that occurred, the land, there, there is an interest for the landowner to sell it to us. And so we're going to be looking at actions that we can take. And I would expect that it will come forth with an amendment of some sort as to make that purchase in the near future.
When we first started talking about this, I think we were talking about twenty-five acres of land. And, uh, Mr. Woods said, yeah, we can take that out of the Capital Reserve. Now, I think the Airport Advisory Committee, and maybe even Parishion Partners, I think those numbers are a lot more than twenty-five acres, urging possibly a hundred acres. But we don't have to purchase all of the grounds, I don't think. That's, that's something we'd have to be looking at. Is do we purchase part of it now and again, hangar construction, and do an option of, 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 um, unpurchase, hold it, or, you know, that, um, there's a lot of things to consider.
I think a lot of that will come out in the master plan. Parishion Partners is putting the work authorization for now. They will be at your February sixteenth Airport Committee meeting. And I think that could be an item of discussion as far as the proper procedure to go through that and do it in phases. What are, what are we looking at, what are the grant opportunities, the funding mechanism? Uh, I think all that can be answered, because the master plan will produce your ALP, which is your airport layout plan, so it will call for that, and it will connect back to your existing terminal hangar.
Yeah, Mr. Price is right on. We're, we're in a situation of being this close to having all the information you need to know exactly how much we should purchase and not to lay down. And so I think if you give us just a little more time, we're going to be able to give a better answer as to what's needed and the method that we should be looking at with the purchase of a certain amount. the purchase of a certain amount and then a option of additional property in order to not lock ourselves in should our need, that we hope happens with regards to additional hangar continues to interfere. And so I think that that is the best case for us, is to buy a certain amount that we know we need and then look at an option for additional.
Once we get that information, do we need to revise the numbers that we're trying to touch with?
Yes, exactly.
And at the beginning, when I said that we update the CIP every fall, but it gets modified through the year, that's where the modification would actually come in.
So we'll bring it back to you to get that included, and then we'll make the amendment to the CIP.
Very good, thank you.
And now for our future projects. These projects are designated as future projects for the following reasons, and we did not have a reliable cost estimate, we didn't, the funding source was not identified, or the scope was not well-defined. We only had one new recommended future project added, so we actually have a total of twenty-seven future projects. So we know these projects are important, these are something that we're going to be looking forward to in the future. Some of them, you know, they're right there, we just need to be able to fund them before they move to a recommended funded project. So the first one is the Animal Shelter Replacement. It's on page eighty-three. Their existing facility was built more than twenty-five years ago and is operating at maximum capacity. The current facility has inadequate space and layout for the treatment and testing of animals, food preparation, laundry and dishes, and adoption and visitation. It's also located on land owned by Harnett Regional Water and is adjacent to the North Harnett Wastewater Treatment Plant. Harnett Regional Water plans to expand that plant in the next five to seven years and may need the property on which the animal shelter is located, but a feasibility study is needed to determine the need of the new location, building needs, and costs. The next one, this is the only new one that's been added. It's the Board of Elections Facility Replacement and Renovation Project. It's on page eighty-three. The existing facility is a little, is only about twenty-six hundred square feet, and it's also operating at maximum capacity. The facility and land also belongs to Harnett Regional Water, which may eventually need the site for future growth of the water treatment plant. The election equipment and supplies are having to be stored off-site, and their current facility has limited parking and inadequate space to hold board meetings, election training, and early voting. They're constantly trying to find locations to hold their board meetings and training sessions for all their poll workers. A feasibility study is still needed to determine their building needs and costs. The Central Carolina Community College, their drainage system repair is on page eighty-four. Their current drainage system is more than forty years old. College maintenance staff has determined the stormwater management system is failing, and the drainage lines are undersized and needs to be repaired. Our county engineer actually went out there and reviewed the problem, and a local contractor provided an estimate, but it didn't have a detailed scope of the project. A feasibility study is recommended that would include future expansion of the campus and a reliable cost estimate. Right now, CCCC is going through a master plan update, so they did not request any new projects for next fiscal year. They're going to wait till after their master plan is completed. The Courthouse Shell Space Upfit is on page eighty-five. When the courthouse was constructed, there was over twelve thousand square feet of shell space that was built on the third floor for future courtroom. Needs of the court offices have not yet been identified or prioritized, but when the county is ready to move forward with build out of the space, a feasibility study would need to be done to determine the needs and the estimated costs. The Fleet Maintenance Facility Improvement or Replacement on page eighty-five, and this is the county's fleet maintenance facility. The existing garage is too small, and it doesn't meet service demands. A couple of options that have been recommended to address this is expanding the facility by constructing additional bays, replacing the aging equipment only, or replacing the existing facility with a new garage. But again, a feasibility study would also need to be done. Harnett County Schools Buys Creek Elementary School Replacement on page eighty-six. The main part of the school was built in nineteen forty-eight. The student population is projected to exceed the rated capacity over the next seven years. Their existing site is a little less than six acres, and it's landlocked. The Harnett County Board of Education has determined this project is a Tier Three, meaning they would like to see it move forward within the next four to seven years, but no cost estimate has been obtained. The next one is the Harnett County Schools Camera Upgrade on page eighty-six. The upgrade, they would like to upgrade the security cameras to digital technology at seven schools. The security cameras have already been upgraded at nineteen of the schools, and this is a Tier One project, meaning this is an immediate need, and we would like to move this project forward once we have a funding source that's been identified. In fiscal year twenty-two, this project was estimated to be about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The next one is the Custodial and Grounds Warehouse Replacement. This is what we had discussed earlier on page eighty-seven. They would like to construct a custodial and grounds facility warehouse on land already owned by Harnett County Schools. This will provide adequate space for custodial and grounds staff, supplies, and equipment. The current custodial and grounds facility is located on Eighth Street in downtown Lillington. The facility and land are part of the real property exchange among Harnett County, the town of Lillington, and the Harnett County Schools. As part of the agreement, the current facility and site will transfer from Harnett County Schools to the town of Lillington. The items in the current facility will be stored in the county-owned warehouse space, which will be leased by the county, the schools, until a new facility is built. The next one is the electronic door locks for the schools on page eighty-seven. This will replace locks on fifty-eight doors at seventeen schools. The new locks will be electronic and can be controlled remotely. The electronic door locks have already been installed on all the schools' main entrances. These funds will just complete the project. It was, it was estimated in fiscal year twenty-two at a cost of three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, and this is also a Tier One project, meaning it's an immediate need. And we would also like to move forward with this project if a funding source has been identified. Lafayette Elementary School Renovations, it's on page eighty-eight. The school was originally built in nineteen forty-eight and was added on to in nineteen fifty-seven. A portion of the students will move to, when a, when a portion of the students move to the Northwest Harnett Elementary School, the Board of Education would like to renovate the school, possibly for additional uses. We don't know the exact nature of those yet, but it's classified as a Tier Two, meaning it's needed in the next two to three years, and no cost estimates has been obtained. The next one is the Harnett County Schools Maintenance Projects on page eighty-eight, and this is to, for the Overhills High School Tennis Court Resurfacing Project and the South Harnett Windows Replacement Project. And we don't have a cost estimate on either of these yet. The next one is the New South Harnett Lillington Middle School on page eighty-eight. This project would construct a new school to accommodate twelve hundred students. It would address the existing and projected overcrowding at Harnett Central and Overhills Middle Schools. The preliminary cost estimate of fifty-five million dollars is based on similar schools in the region. Land for the new middle school has been purchased. The Board of Education has identified the new middle school as a Tier One project, meaning it is requested as soon as possible. A detailed cost estimate will be needed for funding before it's considered a funded project. The next one is the New South Harnett Lillington or Highland High School on page eighty-eight. This will construct a new high school to accommodate one thousand eight hundred and fifty students. It will address the existing and projected overcrowding at Overhills and Harnett Central High Schools. It's also classified as a Tier One project, and the preliminary cost estimate is about ninety-five million dollars based on similar schools in the region. The Harnett County Schools Transportation Maintenance Facility Replacement on page eighty-nine. The existing facility is too small to service their buses and other vehicles. The facility currently has six bus bays, and twelve are needed. Replacement of the existing facility is being requested because the existing site will not accommodate an expanded facility, but a detailed cost estimate and funding source will be needed, and we've got to figure out where to build it. The next one is the Detention Center Housing Unit Addition on page eighty-nine. In two thousand nineteen, the sheriff proposed constructing a fifty-five-bed addition. By two thousand thirty, it's projected that the county inmates will consume all available beds, and no revenue will be generated, because currently right now, the county houses outside inmates and receives anywhere from two hundred and fifty thousand to one million dollars annually in revenue, and it's just really hard to project what kind of revenue we're going to get, because we don't know how many outside inmates we're going to get. There was a study done in two thousand twenty that showed this project would cost the county between two million and seven point one million in debt services and operating costs after we deducted the revenue over the next ten years. Our recommendation is to monitor the local inmates and construct an addition when needed to house the local inmates, since the study showed that building for outside inmates is not cost-effective. Next one is the Evidence Storage and Crime Scene Processing Bay. It's on page ninety. The sheriff proposed constructing an eighteen hundred square foot building to relocate the crime scene processing bay. The move creates additional space for the evidence storage room. The location of the building needs to be identified, and a reliable cost estimate for site work will also need to be obtained. They had wanted to get one of the, I guess, the prefab buildings and put behind the sheriff's office, but when we started looking into it, it was actually on the same land that the addition for the detention center would be, so we've got to find a new place to put the crime scene bay. The next one is the Harnett County Sheriff's Office, the Generator Purchase and Installation. The existing four hundred kilowatt generator only runs the nine-one-one center. It operates the life and safety equipment, the sheriff's office, and the detention center, but does not run the HVA system. The sheriff's office received a quote from Dewberry Engineers in September of two thousand twenty-one for a study to determine the necessary upgrades for the addition of the whole building generator and replacement of the main switchgear. The study will document existing utility service loads to determine the generator capacity required to support the entire facility and any electrical system modifications required to make the upgrades. As part of the study, a construction cost analysis will also be performed. We're recommending that the study be requested as an expansion request in their fiscal year twenty-three budget, and the cost of that study was a little over twelve thousand dollars. The next one is the Harnett Regional Jetport New Terminal Construction. It's on page ninety-two. This project will construct a new terminal to replace the current twenty-two hundred square foot terminal. The last cost estimate that we received was in October of two thousand nineteen. The design portion is complete, and the North Carolina General Assembly approved a six million, six million dollars for the Harnett County Regional Airport Development, some of which is earmarked for the terminal construction. Bids are expected to be received in April of two thousand twenty-two. Estimated cost could be in the area of four hundred, or four million dollars plus, given the current construction industry, but we anticipate this project moving to a recommended funded project by fiscal year twenty-three, if not before. The next one is the HVAC Control Upgrades and Standardization in Multiple Locations on page ninety-two. The existing controls vary by type, and it's using outdated software. Standardizing the control would allow for better centralized management, a more secure software platform, and more efficient operations. Right now, this project is kind of on hold. We're just still waiting to see how the Development Services and IT Building Chiller Replacement and Construction of this building, we want to, we're evaluating a couple of things for that, so it's on hold. The Parks and Recreation Anderson Creek Park Development, the future phases on page ninety-three. This will develop the remaining eight hundred acres as large regional massive park. Features include equestrian, walking, mountain bike trails, and additional parking and playground, as well as picnic shelter. The county has already developed two hundred acres of this, but no funding source has been identified to move ahead with the full development. The Boone Trail Park Development on page ninety-four. This would develop a park on the thirteen-and-a-half acre site at the former school. The initial concept plan with the community input included renovated entrance, a memorial walkway, an amphitheater, a basketball court, a picnic shelter, and a walking trail. A community center and a library are already at that location, and the community has expressed interest in fundraising, but as of today, no other funding source has been identified to move ahead with this project. The Kate Fear Shiner Park Development, Phase Two, is on page ninety-four. This phase will include a playground, a picnic shelter, and a restroom facility. Design and a reliable cost estimate is needed for the sewer septic system and restroom facility. The next one is the Niels Creek Park Restroom, Concession Stand, and Maintenance Building on page ninety-five. This would construct a new restroom, a concession stand, and maintenance storage building. Design and reliable cost estimate are still needed for the sewer system and restroom facility. The Niels Creek Park Roadway Construction on page ninety-five. A new driveway would allow access to the park without going through the campus of Harnett Central High School, allowing the park to be used during school hours. A feasibility study, cost estimate, and funding source are still needed. The Northwest Harnett Park Development on page ninety-six. This would develop a park to be co-located with the new Northwest Convenience Center and Tower Site. There was a desire for a park noted during the public input for the conditional use permit, but no funding source is identified to move ahead with this project. The Public Library Mobile Outreach Vehicle on page ninety-six. A mobile library could provide a library services to currently underserved areas. The library has already established an outreach team, and cost estimates have been obtained for multiple vehicles. The library staff will apply for an LSTA grant to offset the cost of the vehicle. On page ninety-seven is the Western Harnett Service Expansion Project. The library master plan found that approximately forty-eight thousand residents lack adequate library services. Option for addressing this need would include renovating an existing building or constructing a new building. The scope and reliable cost estimate, as well as projections for staff and other operating costs, are needed before moving ahead with this project. So, that wraps it up. What additional information do y'all need before we can approve this CIP?
I have a question.
Okay.
On this final part, they've reported that we don't have the bathroom or tables for them.
At the Shiner Park?
Yeah.
Yes, right now, there's porta-potties out there. There are the porta-potties or the porta-joints?
So we don't have the bathroom facilities, is all that we have?
Yes, at the Kate Fear Shiner Park.
We don't know, we don't know where we can, where we can supply these things from that one. You don't have, I don't see each other, you hear me?
No, that's why it's still a funded project. I know there was some discussion that the, right now, they don't have water all the way out to the park. It stops, I think, right there at the Hartz Building. So is that correct? Because we'll have to, we'll have to put water on out to the park in order to build the restroom facility. Yes, a feasibility study will need to be done.
Oh, okay. This way, thank you.
You're welcome.
There is one clarification I want to suggest, that if that were the electronic door locks of the schools?
Yes.
That would be to complete electronic door lock installation on exterior doors.
Oh, so they're not on all the exterior doors?
No.
Okay.
They're only main doors going into the school, so this will complete that on any other exterior doors.
Okay.
Also, just one bit of information, if I may, the pain project has this information. I know we've talked about a number of possible uses, tenants, et cetera, for the old Ben Haven school site. What are, do we currently have anybody? What are, do we currently have anybody using that site? And where are we now with that school forward as regulations have continued to, aside from the first one?
Yeah, so as Lisa mentioned, currently the parking lot is being designed and completion. We expect that in June, July of this year. We have engaged with Chip Lang with the school system and John Matthews with Central Carolina about the Early College, which the school system is interested in opening this fall. The former media center, the roof has been repaired and replaced on that property. Our goal is to, I'm actually meeting some of our departments out there this Friday to look at that site and start planning for programming to coincide with the completion of the parking lot. We are replacing in FY '24, budgeting to replace the windows for the two-story building, just further trying to, you know, shore up and preserve it for when the funding is actually available to renovate. Right now, funding has been identified for the actual renovation of the two stories, so that's a later project. As part, which I think I mentioned several months ago, as part of the work to design the parking lot, the team in the group that we're working with is going to recombine the property and also set aside the land where the current pre-K, the former pre-K building is, and that's the property that you have seen some interest in. And the question that we'll do before the board is how would you like to move forward with that property, potentially selling or donating that property? But right now, we're trying to begin, we're trying to plan to bring some preliminary services to that site to open it up once the parking lot comes online.
Like?
Yes, and the gymnasium and attached classrooms are where the Early College is going to go, and we envision a partnership between Hornet County Schools and Parks and Recreation to use that gym for the public when not in service to the school. We have and are keeping a list of community groups and partners that have also expressed interest in utilizing that space, which will become more available once the two-story building is renovated.
Thank you. And I may have said this before, but Mr. Chris Johnson, his staff has done an excellent job of renovations of that facility.
Yes, Chris, so he lives at a few sites in this county, Manhattan, and it is one of the biggest building sections, but thank you for acknowledging that.
And one more thing I will mention, I know we have on future plans here a fleet maintenance facility for the county and a transportation, what we would like to call them school bus garage for the schools. I do know there have been some conversations about combining those.
Yeah.
Into one facility. I think Chatham County is an example, maybe some of our former commissioners have visited from that. So just throwing that out there as a possibility going down the road for us to think about. And the other thing, just a little point of information, there have been some discussions with the, once the Northwest Hornet Elementary opens, with the renovation of Lafayette with the possible purpose being for a year-round school going forward, just in FY '22. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. Anyone else have any questions or comments about the CIP proposal?
I'll make a couple of comments. Obviously, just got here two weeks ago to review this, but I will say I'm very impressed with the police's work and the staff's work in getting these documents and preparing the situation. The detail is there, the information's there, we'll be able to see what we have. The staff has done a great job preparing. Very impressed with how their CIP looks. It's odd, I will say, though, not to have roads in my CIP. And I'm still adjusting to it, but it's been easy adjusting. So, but obviously, we know our transportation network is important to us, and we're on another form, but I'm very happy with this, and I think you see that as we look at what we're going to do with ARPA, I want to get our process with our retreat completed to understand our priorities and things. There are some of these future projects that are listed here that potentially we could fund with ARPA and make a good sense of utilization, so we don't have to look at using capital reserve funds or other pond funds to accomplish those projects. And so I think we see some of them as the priority, but without funding, I think we need to take a look at some of them and staff is working on this, so looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Well, I think we see the next steps to approve the CIP. In our meeting next Monday, we will have propaganda, and then two weeks later, we will bring the CIP up for a good do-da. If you have any questions or comments or changes, anything, get in touch with Mr. Pat and have a good conversation with him.
Okay.
Or Mr. Trump.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Nothing else. We'll move on to the county manager's report.
So there are a couple of items that are included in there regarding the preliminary agenda for the regular meeting, which the items that are listed there, some of them are listed as separate items. Look to that. So we'll make those adjustments, otherwise, yes, the public comment with the CIP, I think, is definitely important information, and then also the strategic plan presentation. You all have done a lot of work in preparing the strategic plan, and so I have Ms. Jackson here to give a presentation and go through that. I had a meeting with Ms. Jackson at the county the other day, learned where the process is going. It's neat to see this come together for your first strategic plan. So a very good meeting.
Items seven and eight on the proposed agenda, did we put those under consent?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments about the proposed agenda? And we have some appointment information. I think everybody has this. I think we need to take this and give some careful consideration, discuss it. Before we move on. All right. That's all. Do you have a draft?
Yes.
I think we have a meeting going to close session today.
Chairman, I move this board to go into a closed session for the following purposes: instruct the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county to negotiate in a contract for the acquisition of real property. This motion is made pursuant to NC John Statu, Section 143-118.11A5.
Sorry. And the motion, second one, closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposition? We move to closed session. Thank you everyone. Thank you.